Put out the Independent School District Board of Trustees Regular and Election Meeting. It is May seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. The time is now five P M. At this time, we have invocation by trustee Deborah Ambrose, pleasure of allegiance, and roll call.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today to say thank you. We come seeking your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of our students, our teachers and administrators, and our community. These prayers are in the only name that matters, Jesus our Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
All right, roll call by Mrs. Davis. Here.
Here.
Present.
Present.
Let the record reflect that we do have a forum today to conduct today's business. Mission statement: Our mission as the primary source of public education in the community is to meet the unique educational needs of our diverse population by providing a comprehensive quality education for the students of the Port Arthur Independent School District. At this time, we do personnel. Dr. Porter.
President Barti, trustees, you do have a copy of the list of teachers that we are asking for approval.
Consider and if appropriate, approve employment of teachers. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion on floor by trustee Ambrose, second by vice president Lofton. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Canvas of the election results. Consider and if appropriate, approve the canvas of election results of the Board of Trustees' election held on May seventh, twenty twenty-two. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion on floor by trustee Ambrose, and second by trustee Getwood. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we return the election proceedings over to our attorney. This is Carrie.
At this time, it's my pleasure to swear in the two new board members. And in the name and by the authority of the state of Texas, I'm going to ask you to repeat your oath after me. I do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of Port Arthur I S D Board Trustee of the state of Texas and will, to the best of my ability, preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state. So help me God. Congratulations.
At this time, we will have give you all a chance to, I guess, have a say something to your constituents, to your family members at this time before we call you to the stage. Okay, well, at this time, let's welcome our new trustees to the podium.
Good evening, everybody. I am Kimberly Wykoff Johnson, and first giving all honor and praises to God, to my amazing husband, Mr. Quinn Johnson, to my parents, Kenneth and Mary Wykoff. My friends and family that's here, and all of my supporters, I am here today because of you. You believed in me, encouraged me, and supported me along the way. With you all and everyone that cast their votes for me, I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for that. So I find joy in knowing that people thought enough of me to allow me to serve in a position that represents something so important, and that's the youth of our city and their education. I'm excited to begin this journey to first and foremost, learn and share and implement my ideas and work hard to assist in the progress of our school district moving forward. I appreciate you all. I'll keep it short and sweet. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I love you and just thanks for your support. Continue to pray with me and for me as I continue to go through this journey.
Good evening. First, I give reverence to God for his blessings he bestowed upon me. I'm just full of excitement. This is something I have dreamed about for a very long time that has finally come to reality. I am both humbled and honored that you, devotees, place your confidence and supported me to this position. I am elated to serve my community in this capacity, helping our district excel to greater heights. Your vote demonstrates that you trust me to be your voice, and I cannot thank you enough for your trust. I vow that I will not take this position lightly, and I am aware of the responsibility that you have given me. I acknowledge the presence of my family, friends, coworkers, and supporters who came forward to assist with my campaign. I say a big thank you. I could not have succeeded without you. To my parents, thank you for your guidance and support throughout all my endeavors. You play a huge role in all my success. I look forward to the beginning of this new era with my colleagues, the Board of Trustees, superintendent, and all that make up this body, to work together for a better future of P A I S D. Just want to remind you, a team is like a toolset. Not one tool can do all the jobs, but together it can. So let's join our hands together and work with team spirit. Thank you.
At this time, we will have the reorganization of the board.
Board of Trustees, at this time, I declare all offices vacant. At this time, I open the floor for nominations for the office of president.
Dr. Porter, I would like to nominate Mrs. Deborah Ambrose for president.
There is a nomination on the floor for trustee Ambrose to serve as board president. Is there a second? There is a nomination and second for trustee Ambrose to serve as board president. All in favor?
Aye.
Trustee Ambrose will serve as president of the board. At this time, I open up the floor for nominations for the office of vice president.
Dr. Porter, I would like to nominate trustee Brandon Barti, vice president.
There is a nomination on the floor for trustee Barti to serve as board vice president. Is there a second? There is a second. There's a nomination and a second for trustee Barti to serve as board vice president. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Trustee Barti will serve as vice president of the board. At this time, I open up the floor for nominations for the office of secretary.
Dr. Porter, I'd like to nominate Kenneth Lofton, Jr. for president. Sorry, Kenneth Lofton, senior as president, as secretary.
There is a nomination on the floor for trustee Lofton to serve as board secretary. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a nomination and second for trustee Lofton to serve as board secretary. All in favor? Say aye. Trustee Lofton will serve as secretary of the board. Thank you.
At this time, we will go into recess for five minutes and then come back and go into executive session.
Under the authority of the Texas Government Code, sections five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one, five-five-one-point-zero-seven-four, the board will meet in a closed meeting to: One, consult with attorney regarding pending or contemplated litigation, including settlement offers and other legal matters in which the duty of the attorney to the government body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas are clearly covered by attorney-client privilege. Two, consider personnel recommendations, Texas Government Code five-five-one-point-zero-seven-four as follows: Consider and if appropriate, propose termination of contract employee. We will now adjourn into closed meeting, and we will reconvene in open session at six-thirty P M. Thank you. We now have public participation, staff reports, Dr. Porter.
President Ambrose, trustees, we have made it, and we are enjoying the month of May. A lot of things are going on in May, and we are happy and ecstatic and just really, really pleased about the progress that we are making. Our students are doing well. They're calm at this point, and that's what we want. We've completed the STAR test and E O C testing and ready for our scores to come in. So that is one thing that we're really, really, really happy that's going on. And there are so many other things, and I'll talk a little bit about that. One thing in particular that we're really, really proud of, and we're proud of our students, and some of them do marvelous things. They go out and they make names for themselves, and they do well. And they say they're nervous about something because it's all the, they say that the pressure's on them when it comes to sports. But then they do magnificent things. So I'm going to say this. Tonight, I'm going to introduce you to a young man that's just vibrant, and last Friday, he made our district proud. And he is just one of the tallest, he just, he can jump, he can run. We need to call him Rabbit. They not even told me his name is, I was calling him Keandre. But, you know, they keep telling me, and I kept saying, who are you talking about? Kiki, Kiki. I said, Kiki, I say, Keandre, that's who I'm looking for. Where is Keandre? They say, that's Kiki. So, Coach Granger, come up here, and I want you to introduce the coaches and your principals here, and let us know who Kiki is. I keep saying, Keandre, and they say his name is Kiki. So he is the one that can jump and move and brought home the gold medal.
Good afternoon. To the board, Dr. Porter, the president of the board, all the citizens of Port Arthur, Dr. Oliver, the principal of Memorial High School, one of my assistant coaches, Coach Art Simpson. Kiki is on the way. Kiki is on the way. Keandre Jones is on the way. So while we waiting on Kiki to get here, I just want to-
There he is. There's Kiki.
Oh, there he is right there. No, you gonna stand right here by me. This is for you. You gonna stand right here. But what I wanted to start off by saying is that Keandre, he was a basketball player. He came to us in March, participated in his first track meet at the Needland Bulldog Relays. He jumped six-two, and everybody was like, wow, Kiki can really jump. Then we went to the next meet, and he just started getting, jumping higher and higher every week. And then we had the Port Arthur Relays, and he went six-nine. And that put him on the map. In the state of Texas, everybody started wondering, who was this kid from Port Arthur, Texas that jumped six-nine? And then we went to district, and he won the high jump, he won the long jump. Went to area, he won the high jump, he won the long jump. Went to regionals, he finished second in the high jump. And then he went to state, and he brought us the gold medal for two thousand twenty-two, the high jump state champion, Kiki, Keandre Jones. Six-eight, he cleared six-eight, but he attempted seven feet, three times three. Very good attempts, but next year, we looking for him to clear that seven feet next year, Kiki. He's been watching video and doing things that we've been trying to get him to do all season. But he finally started taking coach word. Coach Simpson, he does, he done a great job with Kiki. I don't take, like I say, last year, I had a shot putter and a triple jumper, and I'm gonna just be honest with you. I try to hire the best people to get the job done, to make this district look good. And Mr. Coach Simpson, stand up, Coach Simpson. He came aboard. This year, he came aboard on the team, and I gave him the key key, and he took off. So I try to represent the district and hire people of quality to make our program look good and make Port Arthur look good and Port Arthur Memorial. That's my goal every time I hire somebody new on the staff, to make us look good. But I want, it's just a short story. I want you all to understand and realize that when I'm coaching kids, it's three things I try to tell them. There's always gonna be some opposition. You always gonna have an opportunity, and you will determine the outcome. And Friday morning, when we got to Austin Track, Kiki's shoes have needle spikes in them. And they check every kid's spikes before they participate. And they told Coach Simpson, he could not jump with those spikes in his shoes. So Coach called me, and he was like, Coach, we got a problem. I said, what's the wrong? He say, we gotta get these spikes out of Kiki's shoes. I said, okay, what's the problem? He said, he not coming out. They was just spinning. They was just spinning when they tried to take them out. They had other kids with the same type of shoes that Kiki had, and they used a drill, zup zup zup, and they came right out. Kiki's would not come out. It's eight fifteen, eight twenty. Kiki hasn't warmed up yet. He hasn't done anything. The competition starts at nine, and we sitting there saying, what are we gonna do? The officials at the track started trying to find all kind of things to get his shoes out, get those spikes out. They would not come out. They finally got some clippers where they had to cut his spikes. They had to chip them at the edges, then sand them down. It was eight forty-five, eight fifty. Now, Kiki just putting on his shoes. What I'm trying to get us to understand and realize is that that was some opposition for this young man right here. But he still had the opportunity to participate, and look what we have today, a state champion. It all just came to light. Even though we had that problem, he still was able to jump, and he determined the outcome of the event, which it became the state champion, twenty-two-five A, district champ, area champ, regional second place, and we have another state champion in Port Arthur, Texas. I want to thank this board, this community, the school, for allowing us to do the things that we do with these athletes. If you all have any questions for me, Kiki, I'm done.
Congratulations, Coach, and congratulations to you, Kiki. We are extremely proud of you. Keep up the good work. So God bless your son. Mr. Barti.
Coach, I always, I always tell you, you the man for the job. I see what you do from year to year when it comes to our track and field kids. It's like, you know, football is big in Port Arthur, but track is bigger in Port Arthur. You see them running in the summertime, you see them running. But one thing I'm looking at is, he just, I mean, if I was a state champion, I wouldn't be standing humble and quiet, and I'll have my chest up. He just standing there like, you know, it's normal to him. It's normal to him. And the word on the street is, he scissor kicked six feet.
That's correct.
And I'm like, I never heard that before. He scissor kicked six feet? And I had to find out who this kid was. So I get on Instagram and Facebook, and there he go with his red shades on. With his red shades on and his uniform on, and I watched him jump in basketball. I watched him dunk during basketball season. I said, man, this kid can jump. But I never did get the opportunity to watch him jump during track. But the word around Port Arthur is, this kid can scissor kick this high, he's gonna win state. And I heard that months ago. Congratulations, man.
Well, all right, Kiki. I've been knowing Kiki since about the first, second grade, so I've been knowing he can, he can jump all on weapons his daddy gave him. He ain't had no fun but to jump. Congratulations, Kiki. I know you from coaching in basketball and just, you're a hard worker. You straight with your academics, you know, this just, God has just blessed you and gave you another avenue to succeed from basketball and track. Look at your community who's behind you. Keep, stay focused and stay humble and stay on the right path, son. You have a bright, bright future. Congratulations, Kiki.
Trustee Getwood.
Yes, I just want to take this time just to congratulate you personally. Considering everything that has been going on in the city, especially with people around our age, it is really just relieving to see some breath of fresh air, congratulating air, coming back to the city, doing great things. So keep doing what you're doing. Coach, I want to thank you personally as well. Even when I was in your class and P E class, you also instilled those three things in me and in gentlemen as well. So keep doing what you're doing. Congratulations, and keep up the great work. Can't wait to see what you do next year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Keep up the good work, Coach.
Thank you.
Dr. Porter.
And Coach Granger, once again, you know, Coach Granger, when he's happy, he giggles. And I was on the phone, and he was just laughing and laughing and laughing. He was happy, and, you know, he loves our kids. He really does. And Keandre, once again, congratulations to you. And one thing about it, I am happy you are a Port Arthuran and part of the P A I S D. You're ours. We're gonna move the agenda a little bit. We'll come to budget a little at the end, if that's okay with Ms. Davis. And we'll move to a next, the next group of individuals that are dynamic. They're just, they're just really sharp individuals. And I'm gonna ask Senior Chief Larry Fulbright to come forward and tell us a little bit about who he has here with us this afternoon. You know, they're our future. They're wonderful. They're, they don't laugh a lot. They're serious people. They look serious. They are serious. But they're good. They're good. I guess they'll laugh eventually.
Good evening, Madam President, Mr. President, board members, Dr. Porter. Again, thank you for this opportunity to come forward to you guys and address you all tonight. We want to go ahead and take this opportunity. Every March, the Navy J R O T C program gives in a one-hundred test, an academic exam, and it covers math, social studies, sciences, reading comprehension, current events, Navy traditions and legacies, and principles, and leadership guidance. I want to go ahead and put this out to you guys. Our individuals up here is a five-man team. Within Navy J R O T C, there are six hundred and forty-eight units worldwide. Out of six hundred and forty-eight of those, they come from all over the place, including overseas, Italy, Spain, and Japan, and the territory of Guam. So the National Academic Exam this year had one thousand seven hundred and fifty-eight teams. Our team placed eighth in the nation. Eighth in the nation. So I just want to take the time and give these, these, these young individuals their due glory and time. In fact, over here, Cadet Sky Brooks scored a ninety, which is one of the highest scores on, in the nation. Ninety-five was the high. So a ninety. I have the C O, Cadet Abigail Castaneda, the, let's say, the operations right now, Lieutenant Dratio Pete, and then the X O, Mary Carmen Velazquez. All right. Again, I just want to take that time, and the way we prepared for this was, we have been taking the time every day, especially with the COVID protocols, and we saw a lot of upcoming last year. As you know, Dr. Porter, I think we finished first for the first time in an academic contest. We finished third in a marksmanship contest in the state. We've really been seeing this come through, and we've really been challenging these kids by putting on all the past academic exams and all the exams that we take when we go out on these N J R O T C competitions. And we put those in as grades for us in schoolages. So that has helped us a lot to help them drive home all these questions and different things, and get them used to seeing that kind of test. So I say we are gonna get better. We're continuing to lead from the front, and we're showing the nation, the community, the state, that Port Arthur Memorial High School is gonna be one of the top N J R O T C units in the nation here to come. And I appreciate that, sir.
I'd just like to say congratulations to you all. You make us all look good, make us all proud. So keep up the good work. Best wishes for your future. God bless you all. Trustees, Vice President Barti.
No, Mr. Getwood, go ahead.
I just want to say that's a breath, breath of fresh air. You know, we're here in Port Arthur, everything is athletics. Man, I am so proud to hear, out of thousand forty-five? Out of fifteen hundred, and we were number eight? Congratulations, young people. Congratulations. That's incredibly awesome. We're so proud of you guys. Continue the hard work. Thank you.
How many kids do we have in the program, N J R O T C program? And the newcomers, how many do you normally see newcomers coming into the program? Well, congratulations and keep up the good work. Thank you.
Secretary Lofton.
First off, I want to say congratulations. This is an awesome thing for Port Arthur. The question I have is, how many of our kids enter the military when they leave N J R O T C? I know they give a lot of training and dealing with the Navy, but what is our percentage of kids that once they graduate, they use it to either go to, you know, even just to the National Guard?
So for the past few years, of course, that's been a little bit lower with everything going on. This year, we have put one point two million dollars in scholarship funds with people that have joined the military this year. And out of those, out of the four that did join, three of them have, they came out of our unit, and we're gonna start seeing a little bit more of that, I think, tick back up again as we go forward from here.
Wonderful, wonderful.
Just to expound on Secretary Lofton's question. Now, once they graduate, do they enter the military with a certain rank?
They can join now, depending on which service it is. With the Navy and the Army, they can enter as E three, or Marine Corps, I'm sorry, can enter as E threes, E two, if they've done all four years now. They do get a little bit accelerated rank.
Trustees? Thank you very much. Keep up the good work. Congratulations to you all. Thank you very much. Keep up the good work. Congratulations to you all.
Trustees, you've seen some of the best and brightest, and we are really, really proud. And you know what? I'll say this. As human beings, as educators that work every day, we need to see students such as these. We have to see them because we have to see and understand that what we're doing has some value. We have to see students that are being successful for us to keep going because educators are human too. And if we just keep working and working and we see no progress, it becomes just, it's difficult. I'll say that it's difficult. And I'll say this, these are our better kids. They're good. But then we have some challengers. We do have some challengers. We have some challenges. And, and they challengers as well. And we want them to be the best that they can be. And sometimes it takes a lot of help from the community. It takes some help from parents. It takes help from, extra help from what we do. And it, it takes a lot of prayer. It takes a lot of wonder. It takes a lot of confusion. But we do have a group of individuals from our community that has come forward. And, and their name is the Project Life Changers. And they're doing a great job with our kids. And they're taking the kids that are some of the most challenging. Our board member, Gilery, Trustee Gilery is a part of the Life Changers. And he's, he's taken a part and gone to some areas and seen some things. And it's, it's different when you're a board member, we tell you. But it's a difference when you out there looking at what we see every day. So I'm gonna ask the representative to come forward and just introduce the Project Life Changers and tell us exactly what you're doing. We appreciate you being with us. Whatever you need, we're here to give it to you. Wherever you want to go, you can go. You just have to have a COVID test and a background check. But we want you here with us.
Good afternoon, Madam President, Board, and all of those who are here. My name is Darryl Anderson, and I'm here representing Project Life Changers. I'm gonna ask that everyone that is here, if you would just stand, please. Man, thank you so much. And so we have Project Life Changers. Just tell you a little bit about it. We've been around for a little while now. And the idea is to help our young people, their families, deal with the issues that they face every day in the community. We've been blessed to intervene in a number of different people's lives and make a difference. We currently work with Judge Gillum in precinct eight with individuals that are going through the court system. And we also volunteer in our schools. And we're grateful for the opportunity to be able to do that. Our desire is to do so much more. Right now, we do have a number of individuals that work along with us. We do young men, and we also have our ladies that do the young ladies. The way we do this is, uh, the kids are identified either through the court system or in the schools, and they are brought to a class. In that class, we teach them through three different phases. We deal with their challenges upfront and personal, those that deal with behavior. We also deal with substance abuse. And then we deal with goal setting, to give them something to look forward to and to achieve. So the training classes are the first part. The last part and the most exciting part and the hardest part is the mentorship, which I believe is the strongest thing that we bring because we do individual mentors. So each kid is assigned a mentor that has to spend a certain amount of time with them each week. That mentor is introduced not just to the child, but also to the family so that there is some cohesiveness there in the working. Our desire moving forward, as we have just newly become a 501(c)(3) and we're trying to do some bigger things. Our desire going forward is to try to do some after-school programs, put some things in place that will be, I guess, will be a little more involved. Because right now, we're meeting with our kids once a week. We may be able to do a little bit more with the after-school program. And then we want to be able to train individuals to do the same thing that we do. We would love to do some peer mentor training where our older kids can mentor our younger kids. And we have a program in place to train individuals on how to be effective mentors. Yes, we, we do background checks. Yes, we make sure that we vet every individual that comes in to impart in these young people's lives. But the end game is to make sure that at the end of the day, no matter where we find them, that we lead them to a better place. Because I believe that if we give a person a chance, if we let them know that they can do better, give them some better choices, some better, put some better things in front of them, some of them are going to make better choices. As a matter of fact, all of us that are involved in the program, we are those that were given the opportunity to make better choices. And because of that, we are where we are today.
Thank you very much for your service. We certainly appreciate it and could use all the help that we can get. So thank you for your mentorship, your, your participation. And whatever you need, this board and this school district is here to work with you. Trustees.
With the, um, with the Life Changing Program, have you seen the difference in the, in, in the children that you are touching face-to-face and mentoring to? Can you see the difference in them from the time that you got them to the time you have them to now?
Yes. Since we've been doing this for some time, we, we have those that are now grown with their own kids. And they are still very much involved with us. So they still communicate with us. They're doing great. Those kids that we are intervening in with now, you begin to see a difference maybe some months down the line. It just depends on how well the kid responds. Some respond faster than others, but yes, there is a success rate and you can see it. It's evident.
Secretary Lofton and Trustee Edwood.
This is what it means when I, when I tell people, it takes a village. You know, I, I, Port Arthur, back in the day, it used to be a village. I see Pastor Hopkins. I see my buddy Eric Jones. I see Reverend Domingo. But you know, the one person I see who has, is standing up, who just finished standing up with our ROTC people is Chief back there. Oh, okay. Well, well, we're gonna put you in it anyway. Again, it takes a village.
He's been drafted.
So you just got drafted. You just got drafted. Get his paperwork done. But it, it, it takes a village. And, and, and it's awesome. And I hope we can keep building and building because our kids are suffering. And the longer we take to acknowledge that our kids are suffering in this city, by the time they get to high school, sometimes it's too late. So, you know, I, I'm, put me down. I want to come join. So put me down. I'm coming. Get me some paperwork. I don't know who I need to sign, play golf with. But put me down. I, I definitely want to be a part of this because it's something that's positive. And, you know, our kids need to see positive things. Some of them going home and they're not seeing some positive stuff at their homes. So you have grandmothers 35 years old right now. And the momma 14, and the kid five, and the five-year-old cooking for everybody. That's just, that's the truth that what we have in Port Arthur. But, you know, I want to be a part. Put me down.
The one thing I did not say is that we actually work on all levels. So that's from elementary to middle school to high school and also at PAC. So everyone is included in this. And we do also do parenting classes as well.
Trustee Edwood.
Um, I just want to echo, Trustee Lofton, beating to the punch. I did also want to render my support as well. And I would like to partner and join the organization. Because I do see a need, just as you do. Quickly, let me rush to say thank you all for your passion and compassion for our students and just for this city in which you live in. Thank you for taking this charge upon yourself. I just ask that you stay committed, stay consistent. And it's really glad to hear, really great to hear that you offer this program, not only for the high school, because our kids and our babies do go through so much as well. Dr. Porter has made mention, we never know what our kids are going home to or where they're coming home from when they come to school. And it's really great to see that the community is coming back. It is time that we revitalize our community as we have seen and things have transpired these past months and several weeks. So anything that I can do, anything that we can do, I would love to be a part of it. And thank you so much. And just keep up the great work. And please keep going. We need you.
Trustee Hillary.
I just want to echo that this is a 911 call. This is emergency. And we need, and, and hopefully this reaches the front page of the newspaper, echoing the fact that we need more mentors. We need more male role models in our community that are willing to sacrifice a little time for the future of our children. Our children's future, that's our future. Somebody's gonna have to sit in this seat in two, three, five, 15, 20 years from now. They have to be equipped and prepared. And I want to make this known to the, to the citizens of Port Arthur. Our kids are not lost. They've just been misguided. It's an opportunity to create change in their lives by putting some positive energy in front of them. And I want to say it's a privilege and an honor to work with these group of men that have sacrificed and that are willing to sacrifice their time. Brother Blake, uh, Ollie, Ellie, Ollie from Port Acres. He had, he had enlightened me on a different perspective, how he sees things. And he identified that it was opportunity. And he jumped on board. He wants to be more in-depth. He's been with us at PAC for the past couple of weeks or so. So it's a tremendous need. And I'm, I'm glad that these young men have stepped up and identified the 911 call. So we're launching this out now that we need more male role models in our community. So if you're available and you have time, please, please, give us a little bit of that.
If I may, we need male and female role models. Let's, let's get them on. We have, we have, amen, amen.
Pastor Anderson, I think I'm, I'm, I'm not the president. I'm just the vice president. But I'm gonna speak on behalf of the board on this one. I think you signed us all up.
Thank you very much. Thank you all of you for your service. We appreciate you.
I'm sorry, I have one last thing and I'm, I promise y'all.
Please, no, go ahead.
It's a joint effort. So this is just one group of many that works together. We actually formed under a, a community group called PA United as well. So we're putting as many groups as possible together to work for one common goal. So if y'all would, please just help us to, to stay focused and support us any way that you can. And we appreciate your time and your patience.
Before we get to the budget, just a couple of more announcements. We were happy, just ecstatic to witness the Wilson Early College High School graduation at Lamar's Day College on last Friday. And to give you a kind of understanding, we're talking about students who started in ninth grade and worked their way up through 12th grade. And what was so dynamic about that, you have to understand that these are ninth graders, really in college, 10th graders in college. So the maturity may not be there as, as we hope it is sometimes because they're children. And they're competing against other adults that are there. Some of them are older adults. But in that graduating, in that graduating class, three of our students, of our students graduated summa cum laude. Now that's, you know, you have to have a GPA of 3.7. So I mean, those are kids. And then we had eight that graduated magnum cum laude and 14 to graduate cum laude. So these, these kids were honored. Once again, these are kids that are going to school with adults. Okay? And they did it. So we are, and then now they've gotten their two-year degree at no cost. We paid for everything, but thank you, thank you God for parents that, that stuck with them, you know, and kept them moving. That's a lot to ask on, to ask for our kids, you know? But they did it. So it was a wonderful sight. And our Memorial High School graduation is scheduled for next Friday, May the 27th at 3 o'clock at the Montaigne Center. So we're excited about that. The last two years, we've had a drive-by. We've had an outdoor graduation. And now we're back to the Montaigne Center. And we're just excited about next Friday being the last day. We had a 418, 418. We had a wonderful prom on the 7th, Saturday the 7th. And I tell you, we tell, we say all the time that our kids can't do it. They don't have. We had several Lamborghinis out there. I mean, so I'm thinking, somebody's doing something. And somebody got the Lamborghini. So don't, don't sell our parents short when it comes to getting for their kids because they will get what our kids need. And we congratulate Queen Anaya Jacobs and King Jorian Zeno. They were the prom king and queen. And then we had our Superintendent Student Advisory Council, where we awarded 23 students, 23 seniors with $500 scholarships. So that was great. So they were there doing things and getting ready to move on. And those are $500 scholarships for them to move on post-secondary if they're moving into a career or if they're going to the military. It's not just for post. And there's a check that they will receive once they give us the paperwork where they can prepare. Because we do know that our students, sometimes they don't have the funds to move on, buy luggage, to buy a plane ticket somewhere. So we prepare, we get those, get that money. We raise money for them in order to be able to move forward. And lastly for me, there's an early release date. And the early release is Friday, May 27th, 2022. So parents, please come and pick up your kids early on Friday. They'll get their report cards, but please come and get your kids. We don't want to see them leave, but please come and get them. Please, please, please. So that is it. And next we'll have, Mrs. Davis, you do have a pamphlet on your, in front of you. And Ms. Davis is going to bring us through our budget and where we are at this point.
Good afternoon, Board of Trustees and Dr. Porter. Thank you for the opportunity. We wanted to come and just share with you where we are with our budget for the 21, 22 school year. So we'll start with just some general budget information. And we start with our budget process. Our process is first to establish our revenue projections based on projections and mostly information that we get from Jefferson County Appraisal District. And then we establish school allocations based on the projected enrollment and some of the resources that are needed there at the school. Then we develop a budget, our plans for each campus and department. Then once we get that information, we compile it into a comprehensive budget. And then we will present it to the board at the August board meeting. We wanted to just share with you our budget calendar and the process and some of the timelines, the dates on the timeline that we go through. I won't read all of that to you, but that information is there for your review. But on this slide, the next slide is budget activities with the boards. It's actual budget meetings or budget retreats, if you will, that we will have. When I say we, I mean the business office and HR and the executive team, Dr. Porter and the executive team will have with the board to discuss the budget for the upcoming year. The next set of information we wanted to provide is where are we now? You know, when we look at our expenditures and where we are today, our payroll expenditures are under budget for this fiscal year. We are, overall, our expenditures are in line with the budget that we've set or that you have approved. And our total expenditures to date are offset by total revenues to date, which means we're managing our expenses based on our revenues that we receive. When we get to revenue comparison, this next slide is just gonna show our local taxes and our state funding from last school year versus this school year. So the first column says 2021 projections is what we budgeted. And then the next column shows what we actually got. So it's actuals. And then the next column shows what we actually got, so it's actuals. Then that third column shows the difference between what we budget and what, uh, we actually got. And the big variance is in our local taxes and that was because of, um, the Motivo issue. Then at twenty-one, twenty-two, we projected, uh, a total of seventy-two million for our local and our state funding. And you would see that last column compares our projections versus the actuals for last year. So we just a little short of four hundred and thirty thousand. The next slide shows our budget and actuals for this school year. You see that our projections in total was seventy-two million, but to date, we have actually received sixty-two million. Then when we talk about revenues, the other slides actually talked about our general fund. But the one thing that we wanted to pull out and just share is some of the ESSR revenues that we have received and are, uh, developed a budget or a plan for use for this year. We, in ESSR one funding, we were granted, uh, approximately three million dollars. ESSR two, we were granted twelve million and then ESSR three, twenty-seven million. And you've already seen the plans that we have for those budgets. Then we wanted to share with you where the money actually goes. And so this is just looking at our general fund budget. And if you look at this, uh, pie chart, it shows that seventy-three percent of our budget is allocated to payroll. And then, uh, another fifteen percent is contracted services, that's the red color. And then, uh, those are the other categories, I won't read them to you, they're there for you to review. Then we're just gonna take that payroll piece, that seventy-three percent, and show you how that pans out. But the bulk of it is in instruction. And when we say instruction, we mean in the classroom. So fifty-eight percent of our budget dollars, our budget payroll dollars is in the classroom. And then the next big piece is, um, approximately ten percent. You would see that's the, a darker blue and that's into maintenance, maintenance and operations. Then we talk about where are we going. Uh, as you know, we're in the budget process now, so we're looking at some budget initiatives or some budget changes that, uh, we can implement for the next school year to me, to be more fiscally responsible. So we're looking at how we can use our ESSR money. We're looking at possible or potential increases in insurance, that's auto, property and unemployment. We got a note, I think, a couple of weeks ago, that there would be no increase in health insurance, so we're happy about that. And then the other potential increase is payroll costs, we're looking at potentially, um, giving raises. Then we're also looking at some decreases in costs or in our budget. You know, we brought to you, uh, our rezoning, uh, plan, so that could potentially save some money. We're looking at the teacher to student ratios in the classroom, so that could potentially save. We're thinking, uh, we may be able to reduce overtime. And then there may be a possible reinduction, reduction in the cost for co-enrollment at Lamar State College, Port Arthur. Dr. Porter.
Uh, thank you, I do have a question.
Yes ma'am.
Regarding the decrease in cost. Now with the rezoning, are we pretty confident that we can decrease our costs? Now, I, I do realize that there may be, uh, a transportation issue. Do you not foresee that being an, an, an issue as to whether or not we would actually be able to decrease the cost of that?
I think we can re- reduce, it may not be, um, millions of dollars. But you know, the rezoning is gonna even out some of our classrooms. And then in addition to, uh, changing the classroom ratio, that's gonna be, you know, less, less classes, almost condensing some of the classes. So we'll save some money there. So I think it will help.
Okay. Um, also, um, Revenue twenty twenty-two budget versus actuals on page nine. The, um, nine million dollars, um, deficit.
Is, is, I'm sorry, it's not really a deficit, that means we haven't collected it yet.
Okay.
Yes ma'am.
Do we anticipate collecting that?
Yes ma'am, it's usually, um, taxes are paid heavily in the first part of the year. But, um, for the most part, we've gotten all of the taxes. You know, there may be some coming in late, but the rest of that is state, uh, state aid from TA. And they usually, uh, give it to us on the backend at Saddle Up and that's, um, September, October.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much, trustees.
I have a question, uh, Ms. Davis. With the possible re- uh, reduction in cost for co-enrollment, how much do we pay per child for co-enrollment? If you have, do you know that number right off the?
I don't know it right off, but our budget is right at a half a million dollars.
Okay.
And, uh, in the last two years, um, Lamar has reduced their tuition forty-seven percent. So we're looking at a lower cost this year. No, 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 it's just the cost of tuition has gone down. Yes, for our state college, yes. Oh, definitely not, no, 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 we've managed to pay it here.
How many did we have?
Uh, it's about, what, three fifty? Three eighty-nine?
And that's, that's kinda like standard from year to year.
We add a hundred, gotta add a hundred for you.
Trustees.
That's a big jump from when we started.
Thank you very much, Ms. Davis.
President Ambrose, that concludes our staff reports.
Thank you, Dr. Porter. Minutes, consider and if appropriate, approve the minutes of the April twenty-eight, twenty-two board meeting, uh, motion.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The minutes are approved for the April twenty-eighth board meeting. Consent agenda. The following items, which are of a routine and or recurring nature, have been designated consent agenda items by board president per policy BE local. All of the items in the consent agenda will be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by a trustee. In which event, the item or items will be withdrawn immediately for individual consideration in its normal sequence after the items not requiring separate discussion have been acted upon. Trustees, will you take a few moments to review agenda items one through ten? Excuse me, one through fifteen? Give you a few minutes for that. If there's any questions, consent agenda items one through fifteen.
President Ambrose, I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as follows.
There is a motion by Vice President Barti, second by trustee Guillory, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The consent agenda items one through fifteen are accepted. Uh, personnel, Dr. Porter.
President Ambrose, we're asking for the proposed termination of term contract employee.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion to con- uh, consider and appropriate, propose termination of term contract employee.
There's a motion by Secretary Lofton, second by, uh, trustee Guillory, all those in favor say aye. Personnel recommendation is accepted. Information, Dr. Porter.
Average daily enrollment, eight thousand eighty-three, average daily attendance, ninety-one point six percent. And please let me take a note, if you can recall, last month, our average enrollment was seven thousand nine ninety-five. So within one month, we've had eighty-eight students and a little bit more right now to enter our district. So we welcome all of them from all over the place, so we're good. Not, maybe some, but not necessarily, yes.
Yes he is, yes.
Yes.
Ms. Thompson's doing a great job.
We have students that are coming from other areas, other states and other countries, not just those that we're trying to find, okay?
But Mr. Thompson's still doing a good job. Thank you, trustees. Before I call for adjournment, I'd just like to say, um, welcome our new trustees, uh, to the, um, uh, board. Um, we look forward to a productive school year. I thank you all for, um, attending tonight. Uh, we look forward to, um, good attendance at every board meeting, so thank you all. Uh, right now, entertain the motion for adjournment.
So moved, second.
Then we are, good night, have a good evening.